All right, well, we'll begin August 15, 2016 meeting. And the first thing on the agenda is approval of minutes from June 20. And we can also approve. The second, on paper. And the new business of federal justice.
Well, next thing on your agenda is the nominations and elections for chairman. For the board, every year we have to have an election for chairman and vice chair. So, for the next nomination, it's the fourth nomination.
I'll nominate Tom for chairman.
Well, I don't think you like that.
We have a motion, a second, all in paper.
You're chair.
We have a vice chair also to elect for this coming year.
I'll nominate Dan Green.
Second. All in paper.
Second.
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 It's a stop. And then the review for the special use permit for Engle, which is on the agenda.
All right, one thing you see in your packet is the special use application from Engle Market Incorporated, they applied back on the 17th. They are proposing a special use permit for, it's a 72,128 square foot grocery store with 14,800 square feet of retail space and a 4,000, 2,000? 2,200 square foot gas station with eight pumps on the side of the old Whistler Stock Mall, which is located on the 1281 Georgia Road, 13.03 acres. Parkland is currently zoned C3. Also as a part of this, which we're not going to hear today, it will appear in September, they've also applied for rezoning as part of this, to be rezoned from C3 to a TCD district, which is a plan here. C3 doesn't allow structures over 30,000, Plan H commercial does, so you'll get the details on that as part of this, which will be heard, all of that will be heard at the October meeting, same time of year. You see the site's served by canal water and sewer that are excavating 3500 gallons per day. The site, the site will be accessed off of Belton Road and, or Belton Circle and the Georgia Road, three entrances off the Georgia Road and two off of Belton Circle. The site is, also has, is in, portion of the site is in flood plain, so that's also something to take into consideration. Back on last Monday, we held a neighborhood compatibility meeting here in Town Hall at 5:30, representatives of Engle, President Kendall, and John Cox, Landowners here today, were at that meeting, asked questions and comments from the general public. There was a, sign-in chip sheet was sent around, the, for people to sign in, there were 42 people signed in, I know some just didn't sign in, I think there was probably close to about 60 people in here, I counted, but a couple I knew that did sign in. In your packet, you'll see the aerial photo of the property as it sits with, I think it might be in Black and Wild news, I have it here, I have it here on my map that you can look at. This is, this is the flood map where you can see where the flood plain is, the pink is also the floodway, the blue is the flood plain in consideration of how it sits with the current building, the Whistler Stock building. And then next is the zoning sheet showing that we're zoned, but the same, we're zoned C3, all dark red, but the backside is on C2, stuck around Belton Circle.
Now, I thought you said the building was not over the road, like?
That's the current building.
Okay.
That's the current building. Their new building is going to sit further back from the road, it'll sit further back more like in here, but it's going to go further over this way.
Yeah, that's what I know.
It's going to sit a little further over here, so that, so you know, there's a water line, there's a water line that cuts through the middle of that parking lot, that's kind of where the, you see the road right here cuts through, the wall that cuts through to the back, and we'll have to relocate that water line, which they've already, they've got a plan for that as well. And I've got, I've got, the next thing in your packet is, I took some of the plans, the site plan, the surveys, the landscape plan, the utility plan, it's a number of different plans, they're either plans, and I know they're eight and a half by elevens and not that large, but it's, I've got all those here as well, that we can show on the screen if we need to look at. Here we get President John, get a little more detailed on the plan, the individual plan. And then after that, we've got the staff report, you can see my staff report, which is kind of what I went through first thing, it says, not just my statement of what they're being involved. They are, have relaxed standards for parking, which is up for discussion, and you can see, I also attached the section in the UDO where it allows, where parking can be relaxed, and if we want, when we want to get into parking in a little detail, if you have questions on that.
How does the parking work in the plan commercial?
Well, it really, the plan, it doesn't really affect, it still goes, the plan commercial that goes to the same standards that, as you can see in the general development in the UDO, the same, the same form of work for you as well. But there was a statement, there's, there's some statement in the UDO, it's under F, under section 152093, section F, which will allow, if, say, if our ordinance is going to allow too much parking, it's not going to be, it's going to be a lot of just wasted space, it could be, it's not saying it's super strict, it can be relaxed, but make it just more compatible, so you don't just got more concrete that's never going to, that will be used, more utilized. But then after that, you, I've got some figures that Mr. Cox had provided, with a statement showing some flows on the different stores, repeat times, you see some counts of how many parking spaces available and what the different accounts, or the different times of day, showing so that they can, what they, what their request would still be sufficient parking. And then finally, we've got our financial facts, that we will do after everything, the question. And for the other questions, I'll let President John kind of be able to make more details. I'll, as they enjoy this, the plan is operating, that's the plan for us on the screen as well.
How many parking sites are in Engle?
341. Coe Wood, if you see the line above that on the plan, Coe Woods, 488 sites in the line.
So, did you choose Dallas and Lincolnton because of their comparable size to Franklin or that like?
The, the stores are similar size, yes, that's what, we didn't pick a store that was 32,000 square feet, but now the store is about 8K, so it's a little bigger than this one. The lane at the store is almost the same exact store.
I mean, going down, talking about stairs?
No, no, we went by the size of store, plus the rings and the cash register. So, we saw the peak times for our cash registers rang, and when we had the most rings in that period where we had, so we actually hired somebody to go out to parking lot and count cars, so that's what they did, they said to count cars. If we could give you rings, but that really wouldn't do anything because it could be the cashier that would reward the true count, so we did a store. What did it for?
We're actually done, six or seven now, if we provided the data for this two in here, but we also did one in Fletcher, we've done two in Tennessee, and if you, if you look, it won't be provided, the Dallas and Lincoln were not the worst, so we, we grew a little, blurred about Fletcher, Fletcher's actually probably a little more, it's a busy store, and it was actually the worst, at 2.35 spaces per thousand, which was on a Saturday, and that, that's what we went by, as the rule for the comparison. So, just to give you an idea, if we used that ratio, which is one of their better stores, at the square footage we have here, we would need 211 spaces to satisfy that 2.35 ratio that we had at Fletcher, so we still have 130 extra spaces based on that. And that, and that square footage I used counts the store, the shops, and the gas register.
And Lord, I'll tell you, Christmas is going to be busy, but this, we hope to be, let's give them Christmas, what, July? Yes, you might have to drive around for parking lot to find something, but we'll have a rich shopping day, there's going to be tons of parking here. Our parking places are nine and a half to the line, they don't need to be at nine, but I'm not like store dean, we're taking as wide as we can get, just to make sure. So, if we went from nine and a half to nine, and we took out some grass and some trees, we could probably slot enough parking places in to be better, we just don't, we need to, to support our customer base, not because your orders are all just Christmas.
One of the reasons they do a little limit on how many parking spaces they want is, is they don't want to overflow on surrounding properties, which all you could overflow on is X, B, it looks like.
Yeah, and the creek.
And the creek.
What is, turning left out there is going to be a challenge, how's that going to happen?
We have a ride in, a ride out. We have a decel lane into a full traffic signal, and then we have another decel lane into a ride in, ride out. All this has been technically approved by the DOT, we don't have great confirmation because we can't until it's a project and we go through everything with y'all, but as far as, as, I showed the plans, given the traffic studies, they have approved everything we have here.
Is this first, the first ride in, ride out, there's no decel lane?
No, because it's too close to the bridge. Right, right after the bridge, there's a number to make it, or we would have.
They still have two other options to pull, how to use them.
We're hoping everybody uses the signal, and we're hoping that the signal, and the signal is right across from the, in the media building, so it's straight across the street, so I know that y'all have some things there, so when people out, it'll be on towers, it'll be on roofs, so when it picks people up, it will know they're there.
Your initial proposal to the DOT, is this, we let it go between that area?
Well, people are getting used to this, you know, the traffic.
The DOT suggested that we have to, you can just be letting through that area?
I haven't heard anything. I mean, I could see it, it's 50 right there, but it's 45 the other side of the bridge, I could see, I mean, I could see it's 45 down the Belton Circle, down the end, I don't care, drop it lower than that.
But they are trying to slow that traffic and keep it, you know, where people can in the left-hand lane to keep moving through, up near the black line, but he's got a decel, he's got two decels.
Yeah, we have one here and one here also, and, and the traffic, so it's all for safety, and that's the biggest thing we want, we never want to be on, anybody to get hurt coming out of our store.
And that's relatively still pretty close to the site entrances that are from the site now. There's three entrances, with the one down the bridge.
But you're not near the traffic going to, what's stopping all of your going to happen?
Yeah, there's a ditch.
That's my only concern, is that person without a decel lane, because, yeah, most people are like, well, this is usually a decel line sector, but a lot of people don't think like that, they're like, here's the first entrance, and we slow down, and people come across that bridge and aren't paying attention, that, that's a concern I have. If they're proposing a traffic light there, without that, turn left is not going to happen.
On the way to the decel, would need to write in the bridge to put a decel on it.
Well, that would, maybe you could just have it.
Well, they're not going to be able to turn left, except the traffic light, because they're going to have medians all through there.
That was my worry, was the, the turn left there.
Yeah, if you see, I mean, this is ride out only, ride out only, ride out only.
How kind of that feels.
And then the traffic light, then you can go left, you can go straight across or go left, but only at the lot.
You'd have a sense to go left.
A lot of that would be someone else.
Because it's hard now to know how there's actually turn left, and it's nowhere near the traffic.
Your truck deliveries will go in off of Belton Circle?
Or all the way we had, iterate the proposal, yes? Is it?
There are multiple ways they think of it.
They could come to this idea.
We can, we could come here and come up this area, and then turn back and back again. We could actually come into here and come up from a storm, but we'd rather not do that. You know, most truck deliveries will be, I'd say nine, but they're not real hot peak at times, you know, if it was a hot peak time, we'd probably come down here and come in and sort around, but if it was 2:00 in the morning, the guys probably going to use this entry truck. Anywhere you see the different, oh, I definitely see this one, but all this is a different color, here, the center is one color, and the other is a different color, the different colors all hit the DOD asshole, so we planned for a truck to be there. The white color is why DOD asshole, we should just call it shop.
What about that entrance from Belton there, is it the same, not that one, but the one right there, is that, what color is that?
That's any duty also.
How much open space do we have?
We, it was, we had room to do, so what, if you see this hatch back here, we had designated that as open space, that meets the 10% that's required, I mean, we have no finance to do anything else with the remainder of that property adjacent to the creek, but we typically would only show what is required, just for that purpose.
For C3, 40% or 10% open space?
Well, it's going to open, go in first, apply the market, and...
As you can see, we're following landscape, that's what we're doing, right?
Open space would eventually park.
C3 was only 10%.
10%?
Yeah.
C3 was only 10%.
But Plan H was...
It was 40, we go back to the drawing.
That's pretty strong.
The center of the creek.
Yeah.
This is a plan, just one landscape, we're going on top of trees, bushes, I think we better follow the signs over here, that kind of, tip of the trees and the bushes.
How did the upstream traffic, did it reach down that far with our initial plan?
There were some talks there by a friend, it's a little bit separate, but I know DOT is, when they do the widening project, they can potentially not be widened, they might not widen anything, but they might just kind of narrow the median, do their stuff, and widen, the road probably has to be wider, but I know they said, whatever they do, there would be bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides.
Really?
That's new to them when they do the project, but that project's not ten until, it's going to, right away in next year, 2017, but not to be structured until 2020. And speaking, was it the neighborhood meeting, I was trying to find the dates of the little single lane bridge, of when it was going to go, was to be replaced, and it is tentatively being replaced in 2020, the same time as the road, I don't know, single lane, original Belton Circle zone. I was hoping that you could get that all done.
They did move it up a year, I'm sure.
Is it driving through, too, will be done at the same time?
Up the top of the hill? There are some stuff to drive the road, but that's to be done when everything else is done.
And where driving is coming down and each road, they don't, and build a circle?
I don't know about actually right there, though.
I don't want them to blind corner.
Is that the real range of coverage?
Yeah.
Well, the, light there by McDonald's, the traffic will back up going northbound on the weekends, almost down to Wendy's, if your light would back up traffic, probably to White Horizon, how would the people turn, stop out of there then, or?
When you did the traffic impact study, I didn't see it, mention White Horizon would be a problem with the traffic light and possible back up.
I could ask for traffic, yeah.
That'd be good.
But if nobody, of the only, in 2020, you don't want to turn left anywhere, so, that's true.
But on your, uh, traffic in 2020, you're not going to turn left either, if there's a median will have, so no one turns coming out.
You'd probably be able to turn left at your side.
So, the only place you will never turn left on that road, everything that I've seen, is at a, at a red light.
At a red light. There in Salar, or Salar, is it Salar Hill Road, turn left?
Salar, yes, I don't even, I don't know if you didn't turn around on the, on that hill, probably have to go there and then turn around and come back, it's a pretty good, that was the Belton Circle, I, is it cut at Belton Circle?
Well, on the, the traffic impact study, there was a level of service on Table 9 that exceeded the DOT threshold, and so, same thing on T11, but I didn't understand what exceeding the threshold would mean to those.
Basically, like, you know, if you were considering, there's a level of service at Belton Circle, they would consider, how long did, if you pulled up, how long did you wait to take a left, and every, pretty much every 10-second interval that you, once you get over a certain time, you'll get a great path.
Yeah, we have the D on those.
Yeah, so it doesn't mean you can't turn left, it might have meant that you waited, you know, a minute and 15 seconds to take a left.
You don't see my wife driving.
So, a lot of times, though, by adding a signal like, well, we're going to do, it'll also help Belton Circle, because we're going to stop traffic, and then you can take a left and then immediately get out, so it should improve the level of service at Belton Circle, just by adding our signal and stopping the traffic.
But White Horizon really wouldn't study that much on that plot, I could tell, I was trying to figure out for people turning left off of White Horizon, and it couldn't come across it on that study.
And, and what we have there is not just trucks coming, or cars coming out of White Horizon, we have the fairytale guy, prayers, the divorce, divorce prayers, and other, you know, animal prayers, and that kind of thing, how they're going to turn left there is a question, but that's not their problem, I mean, this is Engle's.
Yeah, this could be a spillover.
We could talk about all the way to Georgia Line, if you want to, it's another.
Yeah, that's not, they're going to have...
Also, in their plans, they've got, I've gone here, there's, there's stormwater plans, it's through the scene, on your packet, I found it, that other sheet's on top of your packet, that was a sheet that John sent me, after I sent the packet out.
This one here?
Yes, that's showing, it's not a, it's not really a traditional stormwater, where we're mostly toward the retention pond, John could probably talk a little bit more about it, but it looks like it's a MEO status with 85% that we require in the UDO, but it's a little different. So, because of the pre-existing site, we were allowed to count the impertuse areas there now. We technically have a minute amount, well, that's impertuse, in this proposed plan than we did in the Whistler Stock site, so by state terms, and based on the city, the town, does not require any retention, everybody in the state is required to do water quality. So, we've added five water quality devices, so at every point that stormwater leaves our site, we've placed, it's, it's basically a device that has been engineered to take out oil, sediment, trash, and this kind of things, and, you know, the state level requirement, as well as the town's requirement, is 85%, and what you see here is testing data on the box that they're really putting here, and I told Dustin that there's 80% all over that document, and the reason there is, is because about 90% of states in the country, 80% is the requirement, so they are priding themselves in needing most of the percentage, but in the actual testing data, it doesn't show that 86 and 88% is the actual testing data, which is greater than 85% that is required.
So, this is the tech specifications for your stormwater treatment plant?
That's right. It's a very big concrete block circle, and, and they call it an office door, and if you look at it, if somebody drops a bag, or drops something or whatever, it goes into it, dirt, and it swirls, and all that stuff separates a bunch of the water, and the water leaves, and then every so often, once, once every six months, once you gear, depending on how bad the parking lot is, we have to come suck the water out of them out, and just get all the trash, debris, bags, bottles, whatever, tend it out, but it, it collects it and cleans it before less water leaves, pretty much. Some municipalities require these.
We should, basically, this is, details on it on your monitor.
Well, that's a good thing, because that is Carnegie Jack Creek, which is our water supply for the town.
You know, when they put Walmart in, I don't think it's, I'll say the river, or, yeah, close to the river, it's in Hasselown now, because of what's said, you go there when the water runoff comes, and it's just packed, set, and right below that is a land bar, sandbar, it's already been created because of, I used to go through there as a kid, now you can't go through there with a kayak. Is this going to take all the sediment from that?
These devices are really, these are for post-construction, so after this, every, everything's completely done, and we're hoping, this is the water quality here, so we'll submit another whole set of requirements to make apparent, who will monitor our sediment, at least during construction. So, where I say we don't have any stormwater ponds, we don't have any permits on our ponds, but when you will, when you see construction start, you're going to see ponds out there, but they're temporary ponds that are made to catch that sediment, and of course, steel fence and other things will be up, but if we had a sediment, or at least, that was bad enough to be recognizable in that creek right there, NCDM would be all over us, so if Walmart did that, they should have been, somebody should have reported that.
Yes, they did.
We, we had a failure deciding, money's will... We, we had a failure inside, money's will, there's nothing we can do, we have pipe collapsed, and we dumped probably thirty truckloads of dirt into a strap stream, and we spent three or four weeks, and hundreds of thousands of dollars cleaning it up, and it wasn't even something that we intended to do, you know, it wasn't a failure of construction, it just was a failure of a pipe, you know?
So you said this would be in place after construction though, to get the sediment off the parking lot?
Those will be permitted, you'll be okay.
Or we sweep the parking lots, this will be swept probably every five days, so we sweep.
Usually these devices are cleaned out, you know, twice a year, and like that, if, you know, the truck coming, cleaning out seems unusually dirty, every time they come, they'll add to that frequency.
And whenever we be applying any solid or chapter parking lot?
Um, we do, um, if it's bad enough, then the manager of the store, or whoever that's gonna be, will have a company to remove the, the to remove the snow, because it's a parking lot, we'll actually push it, put it on snow, but if it's slippery, yes, we'll put ice melt out in front of the door every day, yes, but as far as the snow removal, it'll just put it up in a pile, they remove, like, or melt it, we'll have some kind of assistance there.
I do remember the, it should, Carnegie Drive, that water intake, way upstream, it's not, it's not near at all, so the path, you know, the industrial park, so. My water intake will not be taken.
Especially use aspect of the permit is primarily due to the smaller parking area that we're looking at, and then we'll go to change the, potentially change the zone in the future anyway.
Plus to the size of the building, the building is too, is too large for what we have in our U D O.
C three.
So you have to deal with building size, but why would we do that, why would we give a special use of it, and then turn around and do the?
Well, it's kind of a, they're supposed to be running at the same time, but me and John had some discussion about it, and we didn't want to, my thoughts was, it didn't make sense to be, do a special use permit and, uh, then come back and do rezoning the next week, the, the supposed to be running at the same time, which is required as it states, for a special, for the P C D, you have to be a prerecorded, so it'd be a special use permit. But as, we didn't want to throw a curve ball to the town board, because we said it to the board last month, and say, forward this down to the board, it's kind of, I thought it was more of a wasted step, so instead of going in the curve ball, and then coming to them in October, or September, to set a hearing for rezoning, and then the board saying, well, you, we didn't forward this, it was a best step, just go ahead and do, have it sit down for next month, which is, our next meeting, we'll have it forwarded to you, and then go ahead, go ahead and set a hearing for them. So whatever, whatever vote you have today, you can make it on the condition of, of rezoning, but.
Yeah, so we'll get that back to the.
So we have to do this special permit, though, anyway?
Yes, yeah, you can't get.
Usually you do it inside your home.
Yeah, usually, which we're gonna have, I'm gonna try and clarify that, make sure, ultimately, the way I wanted to do it, I think is the right way to do it, it's, it's a kind of a waste, I just think it's a little extra steps for them, but being safe and then not being, going into something in October, and then trying to put them off like the same step. Then we'll get some clarification for the future, but when we get a special use for something like this, that we can just go and do it, it doesn't have to be forwarded, because if it's a requirement, it has to go through special use. If somebody applies for rezoning, from plain commercial, that it has to go through special use permit, it's kind of a, what the has to go through special use, why does it need to be forwarded? For rezoning for, for, because, because a special use doesn't have to be forwarded, feel what I'm saying? It's kind of a contradiction in it, so.
That could be part of the motion.
Anyone have any other questions?
How about especially use, we can add stipulations or concerns for desire or eat information for the Alderman to look at. I think you take it or leave it, but if you wanted to put something in.
I, I, I think we could something about that first entrance. It's at the bottom of the hill, call me crazy, people are texting and driving, they're not supposed to, they do, somebody's going for forty-five, you're turning in there, there's nowhere for them to slow down, and it's gonna happen a lot more now that it has, I'm not going for the store one there, but if, if that first entrance turning right, right across that bridge, I think it's just gonna be added more danger.
An easy, an easy quick store would be just like a right-hand exit on.
Yeah, they just close that entrance from there, and make them go to the line, which.
But he's got to get his trucks in there, he wants his trucks to go in, and they're gonna be using that line if not.
Like, but it's not gonna be that much for them to go down to building circle from around the back, if that.
You talking about the entrance, so where they are?
There is, yes.
I, uh, it's fine, I mean, it's used for years with Bell and, and Whistle Stop, Whistle Stop, maybe, you know, if there's an accident.
But what?
Who's following this, you know?
Whistle Stop is, has never had the traffic that Eagles is gonna have, I know you guys were looking forward to that, and, but you know, it doesn't have the drawl, Whistle Stop never had the drawl, and Bell, we never had the traffic that we do now. That's the only concern.
Oh, they are quit, um, all the traffic quit.
I think what's gonna help is having that line at the next entrance, because everybody's gonna be slowing, uh, when that line is there, and the light, they're gonna have to slow a lot more traffic through there, to, to stop for the line. And they can certainly see it coming down that hill.
And, uh, there was, they did have another entrance, which I told mine didn't like, and they actually took it out, and it was between the second and the third entrance, and they took it out, so that did was forward, uh, which I think it flows better with it is, so, so, well, they have been making some changes already.
That third entrance, Justin, is down there closer toward Jack's Beach on that bend that.
It is a.
It's that entrance, it's that entrance, but they're will be making that entrance a lot wider now, you know, that entrance more of kind of a one car entrance, that's what they're gonna try to make it do.
Yeah, that's gonna be big, bigger.
Uh, it's gonna be a full, probably, probably twenty-two feet, twenty-four foot wide, probably.
Twenty-five feet.
So it's a little wide, you know?
Well, it gets a little, looks like a little concrete area or something out there, too, a little.
In the center right here, yeah, I just make sure people don't turn left, until the T, until the D O T comes, so we're kind of being over right here, but in twenty twenty when they start, it's not gonna get anyone, anybody can't do it anyway, so we, that's just kind of prevented.
Well, um.
And the same thing here, just prevented.
If there were interest.
So where are the entrances to the store as a, as in relation to that first turn-in? I thought that's what it was.
Right here and right here.
Okay. So Todd's right, you know, if you're, you know, you kind of wanna zip in that first entrance, you might wanna just zip in that first, uh, turn-in, because right there's an entrance, you know, really close to that turn-in.
Pretty much where the Whistle Stop entrance is.
But you know, like, if you were going to Jer's Kitchen, and you know, he went in right there, that's the only reason he went in that entrance, but now there'll be more reasons to go in there.
And, and what we'll just have to do is, you know, I mean, they can't do anything about that, uh, other than move that entrance, they can't do anything about that.
I mean, as opposed to if that entrance was on the other side, you know, then you would naturally go down to the red light, in terms of the traffic light going in, but the entrance that was outside, there's, uh, outside is a reason.
I mean, I certainly could add a taper to it, I don't think, did you get back to put an actual.
Oh, no, there's no room for physical bridge.
I mean, I could probably put a small taper, you know, if they did too, to allow that, basically, you know, what, I'd take what's going into the radius, and just kick it over, and then go to the radius, so you can do a little wedge of asphalt to ease on into the ride, and that would allow you to make that turn quicker.
Uh, I think one thing is too, when people are, are leaving Friday afternoon to go to Georgia, or, and this traffic like stops, tell me that, that there's, there's pluses and minuses about all of it, but if this light stops, it backs up, and it's letting people out, and it's backs up, people can still get into here this way, and not keep backing the red light off also. This is another really point also.
Did the U D O P may decide to slow the traffic going down the hill anyway, even kind of make it drop down the thirty-five all week?
And I mean, I, I haven't seen any speed limits on anything I've seen, I mean, I've seen on the plans, but I, I don't know that I've seen the speed limits or paid attention. I was more worried how wide they were, what it's gonna look like.
It's forty-five going up the hill, once you cross the bridge going up the hill, it's forty-five, and then once you cross the bridge, it's, it's fifty.
Yeah, it's fifty, right?
No.
Right through here.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, right between those two entrances, in terms of fifty.
So likely they do it afterwards.
Yeah, they may, they'll change that, I'm sure, but, but I did think you might think about, you know, he's brought up a good point about, and, and Susie too, about the fact that people are going to try to turn in where your store entrance is, that's gonna be remained off the, off the open, 'cause that, I mean, it is human nature for people to just go aim straight to the door. So.
So it's gonna blow it down when you come back.
That's not, um.
That's forty-four. We're saying a little bit, probably, correct?
Forty, forty.
That's what his fault.
Yeah, so he showed us that, yeah.
There we go.
You can eat, well, what if? I just have to make sense.
That's the only place.
The red line, yeah.
Yeah, it's the only place they can go.
Yeah.
Now, what, now, I wonder what the D O T's gonna do about a turnaround there to go south? Uh, trucks will have to come out into your slowdown line, is that what they'll have to do to go south, you know, when they have?
No, there won't be a turnaround there, I don't think.
You don't think it'll be there?
No, they, they're, they're probably gonna have a turnaround by itself, not in any direction, it'll be a kind of like, you'll probably see something kind of like a cat creek out there by itself, where you've got the one turnaround, you'll probably see something like that somewhere, wherever that side they want to put it, then it's waiting for light and move it falling out.
There's no way else to do it, except.
So just, this is what we were thinking about also, is if, if somebody can't go left anywhere down through here, and they're doing that light, and they know they can pull in and go back out, they're, they're gonna test, so we, you know, it was, it was good, our store, that's the only place it can go, but that keeps everybody in front of our store, turnaround to, to go back, you know, it's gonna happen, people just cut through all the time.
Some of our concerns are more questions for the D O T than being, it's out of their hands, uh, to a point.
We sent them the, you know, the plans to make a proof, and we sent our traffic studies, and, um, so I mean, they're, they're happy with what we've done, so. We meet their standards.
So what we're doing is approving, uh, a larger building in the C three setting.
Well, uh, we're just going, just going, we'll just go through the findings and, uh, as it needs re-zoned, to be, uh, the finding's fact, if it's completely done, or decided, if, if it met everything, pass a special use permit. Everything that's required, my, my, everything they, how they had, or special use requires, they have supplied, everything is all within plan, landscaping, everything, um. Might have a little bit of some question on some screening on the backside, that'd be maybe about it, we've talked a little bit about some of the trees and some stuff like that, but that's, other than that, everything has been, uh, I think the parking is gonna be sufficient, that's hopefully your decision, and, uh, if I was a little bit of a word, if you think that is sufficient, um.
And if you wanted to put in the motion that the finding's effect were followed, that, uh, as long as the P C D, P C D was, uh, uh, followed through with in the future, it would be.
Yeah, they should be, yeah, you ready to answer the questions, you go through the questions, everyone wants to go through, each question with some detailed answers, and on the conditions of life, trying to be comfortable doing.
I don't think we have any problem with parking, because really, that's put in there so that you don't have over parking, you don't have too much asphalt, and I mean, if they don't have enough parking, that's their problem, so they're gonna have to.
I think Walmart's.
So, I don't think that's a, you know, I don't think that's a problem.
I think Walmart's probably a good example, Walmart's a extreme, this is your number, and you gotta have this mount, and that's what they did. And have the parking lot school, those days, and, and everybody ever been to Walmart, see them, was it Walmart, see the parking lot school?
No, so not like.
Exactly, I'll never do it again. Maybe Christmas Eve, yeah, I think, maybe, but I was forced to go, or I wouldn't have done it, and it was nuts, but that's the only time, really.
Or cranberry sauce.
I've been trying to be, I don't think that last is good, but if the parking, what maybe strict, maybe a Walmart everybody hates is, people, they'd be a little bit bigger, maybe, so.
That's one of the things, everybody hates our Walmart.
Well, any more questions or discussions?
No. Yeah, go through the questions.
Well, in accordance with section one fifty-three point zero five three, if findings affect a special use requirement in the U D O, no special use permit shall be approved by the Board of Aldermen unless the following findings are made. Therefore, the Board of Aldermen, well, that's what we're gonna go over, is the finding the fact of first file. Number one, quick discussion, the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain and promote public health, safety, and general welfare.
Yeah.
And we need to discuss it a little bit for, is that the, is that where I just put my entrance?
I do, just had that concern, I don't know if there's anything vague, it's more of a D O T thing.
I'll take it's been approved by the D O T, it's fine.
And the, the, the safety, I mean, the whole area out there is a, it's a good business area for it, I mean, it's not gonna be any, it's not like they're taking vacant land and building something on it.
Well, it's a dangerous road to get right now.
Period.
Period, dangerous, and with the construction of that traffic line, people are automatically gonna slow down a little bit coming down that hill.
Yeah.
I mean, anything to, to keep people slowed down is, is helpful, I mean, I, you know, you look ahead driving, you see a red, as the light's about to change, you're gonna slow down while they're going down that hill, so I think it's, I think it's a great thing we're getting, and that helps the traffic going in and out of community building, uh, which is in itself dangerous, if you've ever been to T Dog or anything out there where it's packed.
It's hard to get out, it's pretty.
It's hard to get out, you have to sit there, you know, and hope that when you pull out, you're gonna get to pull out fast enough, you know? So, yeah, I, I think it's good, I think that's good, traffic line is a, it's a great one.
The, the first finding effect, would we all agree with that?
Yes.
At this point, second, uh, finding fact, uh, there are or will be, at the time they're required, adequate public facilities to serve the use or development as specified in one fifty-two point zero six zero below. Public facilities to serve for the use.
I mean, water and sewer, is that coming?
Yeah, water, water supply, water and sewer.
And that is being approved by the town?
Well, it'll be part, it's another part of the process that will be in a special use, we haven't had a discussion on the water yet, because they. We haven't had a discussion on the water yet, since they get into the facility, uh, it could be a conflict, but they will have that discussion after public hearing on the water line.
Oh, moving the water line.
Moving the water, they're totally moving.
But the use of water.
Yeah, they have access now. There's water in the front, there's sewer now, that's true. They would have, never mind. There would be water, with Tiscano, have water line, a new water line run in front of the property, and then down the backside of building circle. So you were gonna probably get, I know, building circle, there's no fire hydrants, and, at least on that end, so you're probably gonna add probably two fire hydrants, so you're gonna have to fire hydrants as well, so.
And our coverage will build inside of Whistlestop, of course, that's part of your fire suppression system.
Yeah, if the one, if one in the front, if one in the front there, that's actually fire, and if there's none on down, the rest are on the other side of the road. So, for, so, for homes on that side, you have to get water off the power.
So the findings of fact, number two, is that adequate public facilities serve for the use and development as specified?
Yeah.
Would all agree with that? Uh, number three, the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this chapter, or with variances thereto, if any, granted pursuant to Division S below, and with all other applicable regulations.
Well, it doesn't comply with all the regulations, but we're saying that we're going to create a special commercial district that will allow that size building in the.
It will, you can say, you can say something, tell if, if, if rezoned the plane, much of the land, it would.
It will.
That's not specified.
Are we in agreement if, if it's, if it's minus, uh, the F C D, this will be findings of fact, you're sure? Uh, fourth one, the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to be compatible with the particular neighborhood in which it is to be located.
Can I see that even where those homes are, that's not a.
Is everything on the backside of building circle is all commercial? I think the only little section that might be residential is across building circle. That, that's that, that's the two of them, based on the quarter. Uh, that's the only place that's building residential.
So that's marketing, I'll put there, we all agree with that?
Yes.
And the last finding effect is the use or development conforms with the general plans for the physical development of the town as embodied by this chapter, the principles of thorough, the thorough plan, and any other newly adopted plans that the town has. Yes. We agree with that. So we need a motion to accept the findings of fact.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? That would be passed. And a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right, y'all.
Thank you.